Hoffman.
Here.
Larke.
Swallow.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Adair.
Here.
Item four is a vote to receive the official election returns for the general election held April 1st, 2025 for Kevin Trent Goss, City Treasurer, James Hoffman, Ward 1, Seat 1, Samuel Cruckenberg, Ward 2, Seat 1, Kenneth Ferris, Ward 3, Seat 1, Greg Bowman, Ward 4, Seat 1. Is there a motion?
I move to receive the official election returns for the general election held April 1st, 2025 for those named on the agenda.
I have a motion from Mr. Adair, a second from Mrs. Swallow to receive the official election returns as stated in item four. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
And item five is a swearing-in ceremony for... It's the swearing-in ceremony for Kevin Trent Goss, City Treasurer, James Hoffman, Ward 1, Seat 1, Samuel Cruckenberg, Ward 2, Seat 1, Kenneth Ferris, Ward 3, Seat 1, and Greg Bowman, Ward 4, Seat 1. If you folks would please come to the front of the chamber here. The well. Come to the well. Drew will get you sworn in.
Okay, you'll raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that you will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to your office, other than the compensation allowed by law? And do you further swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge your duties that you've been elected to, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you. You can have your seat at the table. Troy, thank you for your term of service. We appreciate you and what you brought to the table.
Appreciate you.
And I'm sure we'll see you around. Welcome, gentlemen. Look forward to the next few years and what we can accomplish. All right. Item six is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda, and place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, March 17th, 2025. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting, April 4th, 2025. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $284,579.46 and payroll expenses of $266,585.96. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Did I say everybody?
Parsons.
Yes.
Ferris.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Larke.
Yes.
And we have eight votes for the first time in a while. Thank you, guys. Item eight, reports from staff. No planning commission meeting to report. Mr. Bowman, you have a hospital committee meeting from...
Okay, the hospital hosted LPN students from the Career Tech and everything went well there. Surgery is going well and they're staying extremely busy. Senior Life Solutions is also going well. The hospital did sustain some roof damage on part of the roof during the wind and getting estimates to get that repaired.
Any questions for Mr. Bowman? Item C is the library board meeting on April 14th. Mrs. Swallow?
Our finances are good there and checkouts are stable. The tile's being repaired in the front entryway. They're working on the summer reading programs. They discussed the children's library remodel, and Angela has just recently attended those Oklahoma library conferences.
Does the council have any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you, Gil. Next item is the arena authority meeting, but it was canceled, so there's no report there. Item E is the Tourism Tax Commission meeting from April 16th. Mrs. Beer, would you mind giving us a report?
We had two presentations, well, three. The chamber presented what they've been doing the last year, and we discussed their MOU. The first presentation was done by Rotary for the fireworks. That was tabled until next month on May 21st to allow more board members to be present, because at the moment, there was only three of us there. And then we passed the MOU to come to you guys tonight, and there's discussion on that. And then we passed the request from the Alva Golf and Country Club for their annual tournament. Any questions?
Linda, I'm sorry. I just looked up and you're here. Anything to add?
She did great.
Council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is the Board of Adjustments meeting, and there was not a Board of Adjustments meeting. The Airport Commission meeting. I will say, we had our first meeting with our new director, and his name is Josh Johnson. He is... He's not retired military, but he... Is it retired?
No.
But he, former military, lots of aviation experience and background and education, and he has come in and just doing a really great job. We did not have anything other than routine business on that agenda, and we took care of all that. But any questions regarding the airport? Next item is the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting from April 9th. Mrs. Swallow?
It was pretty much routine business, and the pool and bathhouse are going well. And if you haven't been by there lately, they've done amazing in this past week what they've done. They've added to it. It's pretty cool with that. So goodbye.
Does council have any questions for Mrs. Swallow?
Do they have a projected opening day for the pool yet?
That I don't know.
They're still working towards a Memorial Day weekend opening, and I mean, we're all hopeful that there's no hiccups or anything to cause a delay, but that's the projection.
I've been asked a couple of times if they're seeking lifeguard applications yet.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So those are open?
City Valve website or City Hall?
They're City Hall. We also have the customer paper too, so...
Any other questions for Parks and Recreation? Thank you. The next item, there was no quorum for the cemetery meeting, and now we'll go to the Finance Committee meeting on April 21st, 2025. Mrs. Beer?
Everything is right on target so far. The general fund has collected 74% of our budgeted revenue year-to-date, and has expended about 70% for expenses. Sales tax was down compared to February about $46,000, but compared to March of 2024, we're up about $30,000. So it's still coming in. It's steady. I feel really good where we're at. Our departments and department heads are doing a very good job about spending wisely and staying on budget. We have four CDs coming due, and the Treasurer Trent Goss will go out for bid on those. Three of them are in maturity April 23rd and one on May 4th. So, any questions for me or for the council?
Thank you. Item K is the City Mayor's report. Not a lot to report. I will say that thank you to the folks with Woods County Economic Development, Chamber of Commerce, the city, and all the other, you know, groups that had a hand in facilitating the 2025 Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunt. It was very well attended. Lieutenant Governor always speaks very highly of our event. He indicated that this is the, year in and year out, this is the largest one of these that's facilitated throughout the state, and it does... They host turkey hunts in eight other, or eight places across the state for economic development. We think our guests all had good experiences, and we, you know, hopefully we'll see some opportunities come out of that with somebody, you know, helping to establish or contribute to some activity in our community. So that was a really good deal. Other than that, just a reminder that May 3rd will be our city council budget retreat. We have a location yet. Pre-attack? We'll start at 9:00. We'll have... Show up early. There'll probably be some breakfast snacks.
And we'll have lunch.
And we'll have lunch. We'll have the department heads out there with us, and we'll get to talk to them about their budget needs. So there won't be any action taken at that meeting. It'll just be discussion regarding the budget. So that's all I have.
What did you say?
May 3rd. It is a Saturday. Any questions for me? Item L, City Business Manager's report.
So I sent out my manager's report with this thing, so does anybody have any questions on that? I'll send out with the agenda packet. Okay. Big reminder for all the newly elected officials, you're required within one year of swearing-in, or one year of swearing-in to attend an NOI. So the next one is going to be, the next close one, is going to be 16th October in Woodward. And it's a day-long event, but I went to the last one. Mr. Parsons, I learned a lot from him. I mean, it was really educational. So not only are you required to go, I would recommend you go as soon as you can. Just it makes all this stuff make a lot more sense, I think.
You said October what?
16th. And I'll get you the specifics on what time it starts. I think it's typically 9 o'clock, but, and they provide lunch also. So it's a good event. Harper Road, if you've been out there, don't go again. It is messed up, but we're getting it, we're doing all the prep we can, so as soon as the ground temperature hits 70 degrees for consistent two days, we're going to chip seal that whole mile. So right now, it's kind of rough and it looks pretty haggard, but they've got to zip it and clear it out and give ourselves a good surface to put the new chip seal down on. So it's part of the process. Anytime we do chip seal, we got to zip it, so it's going to look bad. And also underneath everything you got there on your, is your, this is my City Economics report. That's a pretty thick one. I'm not going to pretend to be able to tell you all it says, but it's pretty encouraging. I really enjoyed looking at the data for the Christmas downtown and then the bowl battle. So it's pretty interesting stuff. It'd be a good read. Take it home, put it on your bed, sit at the table, and put yourselves to sleep at night with it. In short, that's about all I have. If there are any questions?
Does council have any questions for Mr. Ford?
I've had a couple different people reach out about East Farms. I know I sent you a text on that. You know, we could try to find a way to get that done somewhat timely. I know it's been over six months. Some of the residents that were using that road regularly are getting a little frustrated.
Yeah, so we're waiting for the guy that's going to answer quote to show up. We got to contact him again. We're supposed to get two quotes. One for that thing. We're going to try to stick a liner in there as opposed to turning the street out and pulling the tin horn out and replacing it. And we think that will last even longer than a new tin horn. But right now, the roads are so unstable, we don't want anybody driving on it. And same thing for Noble. Either replace that tin horn under that, basically from Boulevard on down to directly in front of Beatles, or we're going to try to sort of cost us a run of liner down back, because we would end up tearing that entire street up to get to that tin horn, because it runs right in the middle of the whole length of the road down to... So I've got two of them like that. Noble is just not caving in yet. So, but yeah, so we're well aware. I've got these guys trying to track down somebody to answer the quote.
Any other questions for Mr. Ford? All right, thank you. Item nine is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If you would like to provide remarks or inquiries to the council, we give anybody that would like an opportunity to stand up and tell us your name, and we'll give you two minutes. Well, we're glad you're all here. Thank you. Item 10 is discussion and action regarding the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, O-MAG, 2025 trustee election. The ballot... And we are to select two.
Yep.
Council members, I would make a recommendation...
Would you...
I would like to...
Go ahead. Input?
I would take input.
Tim Crispup from Winoka. I think he'd do a fantastic job.
Okay. As far as the incumbents, I don't know Vicky Patterson very well, but I do know Broken Bow is quite a bit different than Alva in terms of having representation. I know Broken, or know Broken Bow, but I can't read Broken. Arrow is quite a bit different. Broken Bow's maybe a little bit closer to what we'd experienced, but it is clear in a different part of the state. Lindsey Grigg also does a good job on that board, but someone I'm really impressed with is Carl Burkhart, and he's the city manager at Stonewall. And so if we were choosing two, I would, I would take Mr. Adair's recommendation and then throw Carl Burkhart on there as well.
I move that... I move that the city vote for Carl Burkhart, City Administrator and Grants Administrator for Stonewall, and Tim Crispup, Councilman from Winoka, Oklahoma, as our votes for the O-MAG 2025 trustee election.
All second.
I have a motion from Mr. Adair and a second from Mr. Parsons to elect or to vote for Carl Burkhart and Tim Crispup for the O-MAG 2025 trustee elections. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Larke.
Yes.
Ferris.
Yes.
Cruckenberg.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 11 is discussion and action to approve and authorize the city business manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the City of Alva Tourism Committee and the Alva Chamber of Commerce with an annual cost of $45,000 to be billed quarterly at a cost of $11,250. This was taken up at the last Tourism Committee meeting. It did pass 3 to 1, and the recommendation then is to approve this MOU between the Tourism Committee and the Chamber of Commerce. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the city business manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the City of Alva Tourism Committee and the Alva Chamber of Commerce with an annual cost of $45,000 to be billed quarterly at a cost of $11,250.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve and authorize the city business manager to sign the MOU between the City of Alva Tourism and the Alva Chamber of Commerce with an annual cost of $45,000 and a quarterly cost of $11,250. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Cruckenberg.
Yes.
Ferris.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Larke.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item 12 is discussion and action to approve Ascend Commercial Builders Change Order Number Nine, adding to the contract for the Hatfield Park Aquatic Center at a cost of $13,535.50. This is regarding the bathhouse in particular, correct?
Yep.
The floors had to be torn out in order...
This is for the...
Oh, this is for the closet.
We're going to approve the ones for...
This is for the...
Two storage rooms.
The telemetry closet, all the brains of the pool equipment, to build them up in a way that protects them better than the initial plans called for. And it's, it's needed. I mean, if we don't, we don't approve the change. And it was approved by the Rec Park Board, I believe, wasn't it? Yeah. So it has been approved by the Rec Park Board, or the Parks and Recreation Board, and the recommendation is to have city council approve the change order. There's no discussion. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve item 12 as stated in the agenda.
I have a motion from Dr. Larke, a second from Mrs. Swallow to approve Ascend Commercial Builders Change Order Number Nine as stated in the agenda at a cost of $13,535.50. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Larke.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ferris.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Cruckenberg.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 250S 307 B1 and B2 to discuss FY 25, 26, City of Alva and IAFF Local 3782 negotiations, city business manager contract negotiation, and City of Alva EMS performance appraisals for calling for compositions, EMS Director, Assistant Director, Paramedic, and EMT advanced for physicians. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter into executive session.
I have a motion by Dr. Larke, a second by Mr. Bowman to enter into executive session according to item 13. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Larke.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ferris.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Cruckenberg.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, I would see table item 15 in the agenda. Second. I have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Adair to table item 15. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Parsons.
No, and I want to put that, that should be declined.
Swallow.
Yes.
Larke.
Yes.
Ferris.
No.
Cruckenberg.
Yes.
All right. Item 16 is discussion and action regarding city business manager contract. There is no action to be taken on that at this time. And item 17 is new business. There is no, there are no items that qualify as new business. Item 18, remarks and inquiries by council members.
Have we found a scale for the transfer session?
I've got a question. I turned in a work request on the app the other day for a full trash can in the park. My question is, are those kind of inputs bog you down, or do they help when you see those little things that you may not know about?
No, they help. I didn't know about that one. I thought you replied to me on that, didn't you? I, 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 I don't reply to you. I thought you did.
No, I got a reply back, but I thought, you know, it's kind of petty putting in the trash cans full...
It's helpful. You know, I said, that was a weird day because they had that kids in the park thing, and the trash guys couldn't be down there and maybe want to disturb them and dump that trash, or all those little meat kids running around. So...
And the only reason I ask is I advise people to use that app for those kinds of things.
It's helpful. It's helpful. The biggest help we get with people using the submitted issue is for people that have trash, or not trash, but long clippings and limbs. If we know about it, we create a work order and give that stack of papers to the road guys on Wednesday morning, then they have a plan on where to go and what to pick up, and just drive around town willy-nilly, hoping they see something in somebody's yard. So if more people do that when they have a list, like Mr. Hoffman's done 14, 15 times, it's really helpful. So...
It's easy.
It is. And then I said, it's helpful. Give them a list. Give them a list.
No, if they're not tech savvy on that, it is calling City Hall better.
That's fine. Yeah. But you create work orders from that too, either way.
I don't know how many times somebody has brought something to me, and I just pulled the app out and did it for them.
Which I said, that, that gives us a little bit of order for those road guys. Otherwise, I mean, I've seen them on Wednesday, just driving everywhere, and there's no boundaries.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members?
I had a question about if we'd ever consider more playground event for Hatfield Park.
So, yeah, the, yeah, there's a lot of master planning items going on regarding the park, trying to wrap up the pool and then move forward with that. But yeah. Any other remarks and inquiries by council members?
Because I had groups looking on some of these yards before their vote was called.
He's already started on it. He's already... How many have you contacted, Brian?
On yard complete?
Yeah.
Probably 10 or 15 so far.
We're, we're going to have, we're building a system right now that'll be available for
Steve to give out to you guys to see those processes this year that we haven't done, where they're at, where leans are at.
Know the process.
What we've done, how many times that we cleaned them, what the cost to the city has been, so you guys have that all in front of you instead of us just trying to guess where everything's at. We're going to actually have a folder that's shared out that he can send out to you guys, so you know exactly where that's at.
What is the process when we... Maybe they have 10 days to try.
Well, he has, first of all, we have to send them a letter or make contact with them.
So we have to send them a letter. We got 14 days to come back with a plan to tell us what they're going to do, and then 30 days to complete that.
By that time, it's going to be two more foot. I mean...
The, the process and that I've asked out to do is get with Drew so we can look The, the process and that I'd asked Adam to do is get withdrew so we can look at some of those Title 11 city statutes to see if we can expedite any of this this year because you're right, it takes us, it takes us so long by the time we get to it, we're almost done with the, the whole season and we don't have anything done. So you're right on that.
Thank you. Yep. Any other remarks or inquiries? I'm being done. Welcome again to our new guys. Looking forward to it. We will adjourn city council and open the regular Alva Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lar?
Here.
Krakenberg?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda. The place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda and will be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of 17 March 2025. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $543,431.90 and payroll expenses of $28,731.19. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion for Mr. Bowman, a second for Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item four, item five, discussion in action to approve Mock Energy Services LLC bid for FAP waterline project at a cost of $1,937,058.50. Mr. Ford?
This is essentially what we have left over after we've done our telemetry work and our ground storage paint. And so as the third part of this FNP project, the third part was we leave the town and start replacing water lines in town. And so that's the, that's the lowest best bid that we received. We've got the recommendation letter here from Iris Engineering. There are, I don't know if it's seen here or not, there are a number of different sections to this project. I don't think they're listed here, but, I'm sorry, they are. So Fair Street, Apache Drive, Comanche Circle, Fourth Street, some insertion valves, Maple Street, Hunt Street.
Hunt Street?
Hunt.
Hunt, okay.
So, and also here, we are going to be putting right here Chalk Tom on Second Street, or so basically from Fourth Street down to Second along Chalk Tom. That will give us the adequate water line to provide to the new senior center so that they will have adequate fire suppression. Because right now if they tried to tap into our lines, they wouldn't pass, they wouldn't have adequate fire suppression. So this will get an eight-inch water line tied into this 12-inch line guy here that's running, well, fourth one that broke last year right there by the O.D. code. We're going to tie into that line down on Chalk Tom and run it straight across to where the senior system should be so they have adequate water pressure and water amounts to do their senior center, so we get that built. So if we didn't do this, they wouldn't get it built. So we added this to the project and we managed to have enough money to do it. So. And it'll also give us two or three six-inch water or fire hydrants in that part of town where we don't have any right now.
Yeah, it'll be three.
Mr. Ford, two block area, $5,000 for traffic control?
They will because Fourth Street's so busy, especially if, and I'm going to try to encourage them not to do anything during harvest, but they may end up based off their timing. So that's, that's what that's for, that's just a plan. If they end up doing it during harvest, they got to be able to get traffic control. So, and I, I thought about this on my way here, I should have calculated up how many linear feet of water that we're going to get in town, but we're going to hit quite a few areas in town that will improve our repeat offenders, but we're continuing to fix it. So this will, this will help quite a bit. Obviously, it's not all we need, it's not even close to all we need, but it's, it's a start. Just getting those four six-inch fire hydrants down here in this part of town will be huge as well.
All right, so we've got lowest best bid with Mock. And I would entertain discussion or a motion.
I will tell you this, as far as Mock, on what we've seen them doing on the ODOT projects, they're absolutely pleasant to work with compared to some of the other contracts we've had in town doing water line projects. So these guys, our, our water team is looking forward to working with these guys, councilman.
Glad to hear that. I was wondering how we justify that final $58.50 of this bid in a $1.9 million contract. But they're good fighters.
Anyway, they, they do good work, like I said, they're great workers.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Mock Energy Services LLC bid for FAP waterline project. It had a cost of $1,937,058.50.
I'd like to second that.
I have a motion for Mr. Bowman, a second for Mr. Adair to approve Mock Energy Services LLC bid for the FAP waterline project at a cost of $1,937,058.50. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, we do not have anything that qualifies as new business and therefore we are adjourned from the Utility Authority and we will call it for the Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lar?
Here.
Krakenberg?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Item three, discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda. The place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, March 17th, 2025. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting, April 4th, 2025. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of $208,392.24 and payroll expenses of $18,948.89. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Hoffman and a second by Dr. Lar to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Krakenberg?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
And no items for new business, we are adjourned.